Would the town clerk please take the roll?
Certainly. Mayor Granatowski, Councilor David Atwater, Councilor Conrad Heed, Councilor Rachel Franco, Councilor Rich Moravcik, Councilor Leanne Aubrey, Councilor Juliette Palmer Parker, pardon me, Councilor Rita Schmidt, and Councilor Joseph Berry. You're all here, so you have a full complement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please stand for a salute to the flag? RTM moderator Evan, would you please lead us in a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So, could we have introductions of officials, starting with Councilor Moravcik?
Certainly.
Councilor Rich Moravcik.
Joe Zepieri.
Rachel Franco.
Conrad Heed.
Patrice Granatowski.
Leanne Aubrey.
Councilor Juliette Parker.
Rita Schmidt.
David Atwater.
Town manager John Burke.
Your turn, please.
Superintendent Mike Grenier.
Jay White Love Board of Ed.
Katrina Fitzgerald Board of Ed.
Andrea Ackerman Board of Ed.
Jane Jalini Board of Ed.
Lee White Board of Education.
Rosemary Robertson Board of Ed.
Susan Austin Assistant Superintendent.
Anne Rita Oakman Board of Education.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you read the public hearing notice?
Yes. Notice is hereby given that the Town Council of Groton will hold a public hearing on the physical year ending 2019 annual town budget pursuant to Chapter 9, Section 9.3.1 of the Town Charter on Wednesday, March 28, 2018 at 7:00 PM at the Groton Senior Center, 102 Newtown Road, which is also Route 117, Groton, Connecticut. This ran in the interim day and was posted on the town website as Town Charter pursues.
Thank you very much. So, the next item on the agenda is Item 5, and this are budget presentations, and we have both the Town Manager and the Superintendent of Schools are going to give very brief presentations of their budget to the council, the Board of Ed, and to the citizens. Mr. Burke?
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for coming, everyone. Just as, hopefully, you've got one of the mini summaries over there of the budget. If you want to see the full budget, it should be available online soon on our website, as well as at the Town Clerk's office and at local libraries. I'm going to, as the mayor said, keep this brief. You've probably already seen a lot of the detail in the newspaper or on the Welcome to Groton program on the budget. The Town Charter lays out the budget process with the Town Manager being responsible for only 30 percent of the total budget. That includes town operations, capital reserve, and contingency. The Charter prevents me from altering any other budget, so 30 percent of the total is mine. Last year, the story was on potential revenue losses because of what the governor was looking at at educational funding. This year, it's about expenses. Total budget for this year, right now, in my proposal, is $128,636,398, which is about a $7.8 million increase, or 6.5 percent, from the 2018 budget. Why? What's gone into that with the expenses? One, one big one, healthcare for retirees and active employees went up by $1.5 million, which is significant despite us having moved most of our employees to the high deductible healthcare plan. Without that, we believe the rate would have went up even higher, much higher. So, at least, we had put that plan in place. Capital projects is up $2 million. Debt service, $750,000 paying off road bonds, that type of thing. Education, $1.85 million contribution to other funds is up $1.2 million. But a little over half of that is actually by moving fuel and maintenance out of the department's budget into the fleet fund, so really about, we're talking about $500,000 increase. And then, for revenues, the only real adjustment in the governor's proposed budget is about $260,000 cuts to various grants. In terms of what we've, what me and the staff've done, and by the way, thank you to all my staff, and Cindy Landry, and Robin Molding, and a bunch of other people who put in months of work, first thing we did is had the department heads come in with a level service, and we kept everything the same, come in with that budget, and then, in the narrative, what would you have to do to get to a 0 percent budget increase and then a 5 percent reduction? We meet with, we meet among the finance people and me first to go through everything, and then we meet with each department, going through every detail of their budget, make a series of cuts. We cut eight positions out of the budget, cut capital projects. Our original capital project list for the general fund was close to $8 million in the list. We got that down to about $3 million. I expect more cuts to come, but there is a backlog of items for that capital projects fund. Removed a lot of vehicles out of the list. I've been pushing that, those back the last few years. And then reductions outside agencies, a little bit of cuts there. One thing I've neglected to mention on why we're here, too, is there's also less fund balance than years past. It's drying up. The mill rate proposed for right now, if everything stayed the same, is 24.97, which is 1.24 mills, or a 5.3 percent increase over the current 23.63 mills. In summary, please remember, this is the first step of a long process. I fully expect the Town Council and RTM to look at all services being provided and make changes accordingly. We'll see this budget change drastically through the process. That's summary. Thank you.
Chairperson Watson is here as well?
Yes.
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
And Dr. Grenier, do you have your brief presentation?
We do.
And so, as the mayor has suggested, my name is Kim Shepherdson Watson. I am the Chair of the Board of Education, and I will start off the presentation about the board, and I will, about the budget, and then Dr. Grenier will also be talking a little bit more about the, some of the details of the budget. Our first page, so it's this one, right? He did a diagram. I still don't know if I know how to do it. So, but this is who we are. One of the things that I do want to make sure that it gets highlighted over the past year, there's been some very exciting things that have happened in the school district, and actually, just recently, our high school band was invited to march in the Queen's Parade for 2019, and there was not many other bands in the United States that were invited to do so. And so, that speaks to the caliber of the band program. Also, on Monday's meeting, we were able to recognize Jared?
Cosmer.
Cosmer?
Codman.
Codman?
Cosman.
Cosman? Sorry. As he is now actually a national champ as wrestling, and before we were even going to have him there, we were just going to celebrate the fact that he was actually won all four years in the states, and so, we got to recognize the fact that he was national. Also, the co-op ice hockey team that Fitch is part of, we won states, and our robotics team is continuously to flourish, and my understanding is that even last time, they had won that championship, and that our fencing team has also won state champions. So, our district is just filled with many, many wonderful things. The other couple of things that I just want to make sure that get highlighted, in case that they don't in other, in other slides, is that a lot of our programming that we have done in the academics has come through grants, and we have been the proud recipients of the Writers Workshop, and the Readers Workshop, the, I'm just making sure I got all the right names, and then also, our math grant, grants, that were for our military community, because that was where the DOD grant, or Department of Offense, offense? Defense? Offense? You say potato, I say potato. But, but we were able to then partner and to make sure that across the district, all of our students were going to be, were exposed to those programs. And then, last but not least, is that we have been, we have received the EXPECT grant, and we, with other districts locally, and LEARN, and that is what has helped begin to propel us looking at doing a magnet-themed program for our two middle schools, which Westside will earn the distinction of having the STEM program, and then Cutler will have the Arts and Humanities, and it will be infused with the MYP, which is the Middle Years Program, which is going to help do a pathway for us and integrate our IB program, which now exists in our high school. So, the, not bad, not bad. All right. So, this here is our mission statement, which is teaching and learning, and this is part, and the goals are what have driven our strategic plan. Last year, the board, I mentioned, took, participated in really kind of taking a look at having, actually coming, having someone come and facilitate with us and develop a strategic plan for the district, so that our budgets, our curriculums, our direction, all kind of makes sense. And from that, or actually, the goals that we have here, which is to provide dynamic, rigorous curriculum, ensure effective and engaging instruction, and embrace excellent learning environments, help drive that strategic plan. Even though it is the end of March, though the weather kind of makes me feel like it's still in January, we, we have been thinking long and hard about our budget, and in the first several months, it is with, it is actually the superintendent's budget, and he begins to prepare, he actually asks the administration staff to kind of send him information, and then the board begins to do their, their work around understanding the budget where it ends in April, excuse me, in February, where we vote on it. One thing that I would like to mention for this year is that Dr. Grenier and his staff, up until the middle of January, were actually not working with a complete budget from this past year, but my thanks to the Town Council and the RTM, that once the monies became, became to us, you made sure that we got them, and it made our budget whole, so I say thank you. In order to move it, I have to do it. There we go. So, some of the highlights that this budget makes sure that we have, that will be, that will be presented, is that it still helps us maintain effective class sizes. It still continues to enhance our literacy programs, which is the grants that I just mentioned, which is the Writers Workshop and the Readers Workshop, and from that, we have learned to embrace or to experience the fact that libraries within the classroom are really important, and we're able to sort of make sure that we have them. The math workshops, to increase the rigor and relevance, as we know, math has become a really big issue for us, but also an issue for across the state, and so, we are very thankful to have that grant program helping us. We also have a School Resource Officer, and in the past, is it two years? We have actually been, we, it's the, we've been sharing the funding for the School Resource Officer, and this is at the high school, in that also, part of the budget is upgrading of aging classroom, the technology and district infrastructure, and that we're also being able to retain all curricular and extracurricular activities. The other highlights that, to continue, is, this is also to support for our elementary magnet schools, and it continues our high school one-to-one computer program. In other words, every student, when they enter high school, they actually are assigned a computer, and this is just kind of keep us relevant with all the other districts, to make sure that our high school students have that technology at their hands. We have enhanced our vocational program for 18- to 21-year-olds. This is the program for students who have an I, have an active IEP, and that are still requiring vocational, or could benefit from vocational experiences. We have that, and in fact, we have, No Inc. Nibbles has partnered with us for the past year and a half to provide a job opportunity and skill building along with that. We have the support and planning of implementation for next-generation science standards. That is, that is what has come down from the state of Connecticut, and are we still in the pilot, or is?
We have the pilot assessment this spring.
So, we're having the pilot assessment this spring. So, in other words, this is, we're just following, actually, sort of the direction from the state of Connecticut with this next generation. We continue to, elementary after-school enrichment programs, and we're, have expanded them into the middle school, and we maintain high-quality childcare programs before and after school. So, with that, I am going to move to Dr. Grenier, and he is going to kind of walk us through part of the budget.
Well, thank you, and I'll try to get through this, because hopefully, you received, picked up a handout, which is a very quick summary. The whole, the full budget is online at our website. This is a, this is a kind of an interesting slide, because if you'll notice, the first, the first couple of, the salaries and benefits, every school budget in the country is separated into eight categories, so the first two salary and benefits, actually, first three purchase services have an increase. The rest, the rest of the, the rest of the account, everything from property services down to dues and fees, actually, is a reduction, in some cases, a significant reduction. But the reason I put the number in green is, that is the proverbial 800-pound gorilla in the room. Because of post-employment benefits and current claims for our employees, similar to what the town is experiencing, the health insurance account is, needs to go up by $2.3 million. At least, that is the current projection. The board and I are hoping, we're looking very carefully at our experience. We want to be responsible and make sure we have sufficient funds there, but the whole budget goes up by 1.8 million, and, but the health insurance goes up by 2.3 million, so obviously, it's a below-zero budget, except for the health insurance. If you turn to the last page of the handout that I provided, that's a little more detailed, but when, when I, when I initially gave the budget to the, to the board, it came in after discussing this with the school staff at about a 4.13 percent increase, and then on, as you can see, in successive meetings, the board continued to look at the budget with it, and really go over it with a fine-tooth comb, and first meeting on the 23rd, the board cut $291,000, the next meeting on January 29th, cut $537,000, $45,003,000, and so, as you can see, as we went through the budget, it went from a 4.1 percent down to 2.4. But you'll notice that February 21st was 1.98, and then it went up from there, and the reason it went up from there was because we got our health insurance projection, and we wanted to be very careful, to be sure we weren't underfunding that, which has been a serious problem in the past. Budget history, over the last seven years, the budget has gone up by a little less than 3/4 of a percent total. Budgets, and this is pretty common with all public budgets, but our budget is 78 percent, nearly 80 percent are salary and benefits, so I always like to point that out, because obviously, what we give children are teachers, and administrators, and custodians, and secretaries, and so, the heart of the budget, obviously, are the people that serve the children. In terms of the town revenue, we continue to get, fortunately, 33 percent of our budget comes from the Education Cost Sharing Grant. Because Groton was identified as an Alliance District, for the next five years, Groton will continue to get $25 million. So, that will, that will remain a constant, at least for planning purposes, and obviously, the larger portion, 61 percent, comes from town resources, from citizens. I always like to point out what the board budget, and this is very similar to all budgets across the country, the board budget is, is about 61 percent of the total budget for the, for the town. That is to say, our 78 million dollar budget is about 61 percent of 129.7. We do get grants. Chairman Watson mentioned it. In fact, we get $5,288,000 worth of grants. The reason I'm separating this is because these, these funds come right to the board. The first, first several, Title I, II, and III are federal categorical grants. The town gets 1.2 million. Carl Perkins is a vocational grant. IDEA is Individuals Education Act. That is a special ed grant. We get about, a little bit more than $1 million for our special education program, and all of those, and then, the Department of Defense, those are actually competitive grants. We've applied for those grants, and this year, we received, from those federal sources, $3.6 billion. The EXPECT grant is the grant that we applied for. It's actually a $4 million grant over a five-year period that will allow us to change, in the fall, parents are being asked, middle school parents are being asked which middle school. So, children throughout Groton can go to either middle school. Either by their neighborhood, they get to choose and just stay with their neighborhood middle school, or they could go to the middle school on the other side of town. That is to say, Mystic kids can go to a STEM school, and kids in the city and military community can come to Cutler if they choose to go to an Arts and Humanities School. And the last one is, is the Alliance District, which provided us $600,000 to help us, where, actually, we're using a fair amount of that for, for books and equipment for the children. And my, my last slide is this, because we have presented a fair number, a fair amount of numbers, the fact of the matter is, we're talking about the future of our children, and it's not just about dollars and cents, it's about the quality of the experience that these children have, and in investing in the future of our town that I feel so proud to be a part of. So, thanks very much, and looking forward to your comments.
Thank you, Dr. Grenier. Okay, we are on to item number six, the opening of the public hearing, and I just wanted to say a few words before we get started. First, thank you all for coming out. We appreciate your being here, and our role this evening, the Town Council and the Board of Ed role, is to listen, so we won't be engaging at this point. We just want to hear what you have to say, so that we can consider it when we're doing our budget deliberations. We will have three minutes per speaker. I'll give you one-minute notice when it's time. If you are inclined, you can just say, "I agree with the previous speaker." You don't have to go into a whole, long speech if you choose not to. Anything else? All right. So, we have two sheets of citizens who wish to speak this evening, so if you could come to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the public record. We have Sue Auberbach, I'm sorry, followed by Brendan Woolridge.
Good evening, members of the Town Council, Board of Education, and other audience members. My name is Sue Auberbach. I live at 19 Totog Street. I would like to thank you for your continued support of the Groton Public Library, and explain some of the results of your support. For decades, I have been a loyal patron of Groton Public Library, but my recent retirement has allowed me to devote more time there as a volunteer, and I've become the president of the Library Circle of Friends. I've been amazed at the range of services the library offers. It fills many roles in promoting literacy in our community, as a source of books, periodicals, films, and music available to borrow, as the site of numerous community activities, films, lectures, and meetings, as a place for tutoring, storytime, learning to use technology, and even apply for passports, as the location of a thriving, young junior friends group of over 100 children who meet to perform community service projects, as the host to an endless cycle of events, including a teen iron chef competition, an edible book festival, foreign films, a local history fair, and a trunk-or-treat holiday, Halloween event, and provision of outreach to preschools, nursing homes, and camps, and even establishing little libraries in our neighborhoods and even beaches. It's clear I could go on and on, singing the praises of our wonderful Groton Public Library. For your future reference, I have to distribute a year-end review of the, some of the impressive events and accomplishments of our library in the past year. I urge you to support the Groton Public Library in the budget process and preserve its invaluable role in the literacy of our community. Thank you for your attendance and your interest.
Thank you. Brendan Woolridge, followed by Jeff Cummings, please.
Good evening, Brendan Woolridge. I live at 2 Gallup Street in the center of Groton, and I also own a business called The Sandbox. We own a piece of property up on Route 184, 1500 Gold Star Highway. Here tonight to advocate on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department and the budget they submitted to the Town Manager, specifically, two line items totaling $42,000 that were earmarked to purchase a beach cleaning grooming machine for Esker Point Beach. That machine is a critical piece of the puzzle to improve the quality of place in Groton, but very specifically, at Esker Point Beach, after a number of years of neglect, basically due to a lack of funding. As a resident, I basically live at Esker Point Beach in the summertime. I enjoy it quite a bit. I enjoy sports and events there, and as a business owner, I operate events there on weekends throughout the summer. I have for about seven years now. The last few years, I've had to move a couple of my events from Esker Point Beach to Ocean Beach in New London. That's a, basically, a direct result of the maintenance there at Esker Point Beach. There's a tremendous amount of debris that washes up on the shoreline, it rots, and it stinks, and so, out-of-town visitors that are participating in the events, basically, have to sit next to that all day long, you know, parents while their kids are participating in the events, and it's just gotten too bad that I just, I just can't do it anymore, so I've had to move some events over to Ocean Beach, and that's a direct loss of revenue in the form of fees to Parks and Recreation. So, as a resident and business owner, I implore you to add those two line items, $42,000 for that beach grooming machine, back to the budget, and, you know, help improve the quality of place at Esker Point Beach. Really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff Cummings, followed by John Watson.
Hi, I'm Jeff Cummings. I live at 338 Colonel Ledgerd Highway. I'm also here to advocate. Brendan and I are going to double bear you. I'm representing the Esker volleyball community, and I apologize for my clothes. I have to be at Cutler in about 20 minutes for a game, but we wanted to bring the business side, as well as the community side. We have probably 300-plus volleyball players that use Esker Point in the summertime, and we have seen the impact that the algae wash has on the, on the beach, and it's definitely becoming a detraction to Esker. We, we have a good group of people, but there are, I've seen parents have to shoo their kids away because of the algae wash. There's, it washes more than just algae. There's liability from bugs and all the stuff that comes with it. So, we've been working in conjunction with the town. I think it's a very good collaboration between Parks and Rec and the community. We've had several meetings with them. We have a huge crowd of volunteers that support Esker Point, so we keep expenses down, because we have free help, basically, but if we can keep the beach clean, which they have been paying someone to come in the last summer or two, to help keep it clean and keep it tolerable, but even with that, some days, you can, you can smell Esker from as far away as Fitch High School. So, it's not just the beach, it's the residents around have to deal with it. So, just strong encouragement that if we can get this added back in, it will support two of the main objectives in the overall budget process, continue to improve economic development, the more people we can get, the more attractive we can make Esker Point Beach, the more we get people in there, and provide community services. If we can get the beach clean, we're already working with Parks and Rec on some new programs for youth. There's potential for having senior programs use it during the day for, for camps and other activities, as well as something I saw in the calendar with the things called Camp Button. There's a group of us that would... There's a group of us that would definitely like to start working with a special needs community.
You have one minute, sir.
Okay. So it's just a lot of benefits if we can get this beach clean and make Esker an attraction again. Thank you.
Thank you. John Watson, followed by Pamela Tankard.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is John Watson, two fifteen Elm Street, Groton, Connecticut. My wife and I have lived here or were attracted to this area in nineteen seventy-seven, and we love it here. We think Groton is great. Our kids got a great education here, so thank you. I'm here tonight to, again, or also ask for support of the Groton Parks and Recreation budget. I'm going to give you a little bit of detail about why from a bigger perspective, although I certainly condone the previous request. I've been a participant, volunteer, and donor with Parks and Rec since nineteen seventy-seven. They offer great facilities and programs that benefit in some way nearly everybody who lives in or visits Groton. But don't just take my word for it. The backbone of Groton Parks and Rec is health, fitness, social equity, conservation, and economic value. Parks and Rec have increased the number of participants and programs offered while reducing the budget by more than one-third since two thousand and seven. It also generates revenue for the town through fees. This tells me that they're working efficiently and effectively, and they're creating programs that attract participation, which I think is key. Parks and Rec resources are also a key part of our town's value and its ability to attract visitors, residents, and businesses. Again, Groton is great, but don't just take my word for it. Studies commissioned by the town in two thousand nine and two thousand sixteen substantiate what I just said. Please consider two examples of current requests that give you the rich detail, but at the same time support the broader backbone that I just talked about for Parks and Recreation. If it helps, consider yourself a visitor to Groton or a resident that wants to make better use of some of Groton's recreational facilities. Specifically, I'm interested in the coastal resource, resources and access and recreational activities. Spicer Dock in Noank on BB Cove is an important coastal access point and home to school, recreational, and adaptive rowing and kayaking programs. I'm very proud of that. What a great diversity of programs to offer. The new dock that's there, which I hope you've seen, was paid for, I believe, mostly by fundraising. And it's great, but now we literally need to hold up our end of the bargain. It turns out that the shore attachment points and the access surfaces and the land next to the dock are in need of serious attention. A dock that's not attached to the shore in some way is called a barge, and we want it to stay a dock. So that's, that's one thing that you'll see in Mark and Jerry's and others' budget requests to use. So it gives you a little bit of the flavor behind that and the programs that it opens the door to.
One minute, sir.
Esker Point Beach, great resource. Already talked about one of the drawbacks of that, and I certainly understand and condone the solution that Parks and Rec proposes. To paraphrase a couple of sayings, "If you build it, they will come." Well, we have built it, and they are coming, and we only get one chance to make a good first impression on visitors and first-time users of our facilities. Proving the budget request will improve the attractiveness of Groton and its Parks and Recreation resources to residents and to visitors. I thank each of you for your time, your hard work, your consideration, and your ongoing support for our great town and the Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Pamela Tankard, followed by Andrew Mirta.
Hello, everybody. My name is Pamela Tankard. I live at one sixty-eight Indian Field Road, across the street in good old Groton. That's what I call this, good old Groton. I've lived here since, gosh, nineteen sixty-five. I'm here to quickly add to our friend over here about the Groton Library. Recently, there, you may have seen the article in the paper about one of our wonderful volunteers who did pass away very recently. Her name was Jody Katz. She had been a volunteer for the Groton Library for many, many years, and I really don't know how she found the time to do all that she did, but, and she was a very selfless person. Like I said, she, she read to the seniors at the nursing home. She went to nursery schools. She gave little puppet shows when she was teaching kids how to read. She helped tutoring programs. The Groton Library is an amazing facility. It's beautiful to look at. The grounds are gorgeous. It's very centrally located. It is wonderful, and I'd hate to, to see any budget issues kind of let anything erode. If we can keep it up and above board and, you know, it would be like a flower watching it wilt if we just don't give it enough water. So I'm a volunteer at the library, by the way. I'm not as busy as Ms. Katz was, but I help, I've helped programs at the nursing homes. I've delivered books to some of the senior living places, and I've participated in the Bumpers to Books Halloween event that the library has. And one more thing I, I would have to note, that it really is intergenerational. You'll see mothers walking in with three kids in tow at one time, or you'll see grandmothers and grandfathers and college students and rich, poor, short, tall, whatever. We're all there, and I really think more people need to go there. And my last thought was, if you're bored and you need something to do and you don't want to go to the Crystal Mall again because you're just wasting your money, go to the library, read all the magazines, chill out. It's, it's a wonderful place. So whatever you can do to keep a few dollars in the coffers for us, that would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrew Mirta, followed by Catherine Young.
Hi, my name's Andrew Mirta. I live at eleven Carroll Court in Groton, Connecticut. Just want to come today and speak in support of the education system, make sure we're properly funding it for our kids. It's not just about, you know, developing them into, you know, good people as they get older. That is important, but in the future, it is very much, unfortunately, Dr. Grenier, it is very much about dollars and cents. The kids that are in the school system today, this is their foundation. This is what's going to help them achieve things later in life, whether it's they go to tech schools afterwards and they become electricians, plumbers, HVAC technicians, whether they go off to college and, you know, get a degree and become educators, lawyers, doctors, or even the kids that go off to, you know, serve their country and be on active duty in the military. All those things, you know, as technology progresses, those jobs become harder and they become more demanding, and they have to have stronger backgrounds in science, math, use of computers, and that's, that's, that's all starting day one kindergarten. And so we need to be properly funding our schools to make sure our kids can compete and succeed in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Young, followed by Clara Rogers.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council, Board of Ed, Town Staff, Volunteers and Citizens, fellow citizens. I'm here, oh, my name is Catherine Young, and I live at Bushnell Street here in Groton. I'm here as a fellow citizen and speak briefly tonight as Chair of the Economic Development Commission. Beginning in two thousand fifteen, the Economic Development Commission and OPDS, or the Office of Planning and Development Services, have worked together in lockstep. It began in two thousand sixteen with a team-building process arranged by the Office of Planning and Development Services to ensure a respectful understanding of our mutual goals. Then in two thousand seventeen, the office jump-started, completed, and received approval of the airport development zone from the Connecticut Department of Economic Development for Groton. And in two thousand eighteen, the office facilitated the Economic Development Commission's becoming a member of the Connecticut Economic Development Association. And the Economic Development Commission Business Outreach Visitation Program was also highly supported and facilitated by the Office of Planning and Development Services. And this is a direct result of the recommendation in the Town Council's market and zoning analysis. And to date, we've done over twenty-five visits to businesses in key districts in the town. And the EDC is very proud of the newly-launched and dedicated economic development website, exploremoregroton.com, and the new logo, which is on all our printed and digital materials, such as the handout this evening. So in conclusion, the EDC very much supports the budget that is proposed for the Office of Planning and Development Services to continue to work very hard to support the current businesses, to help the businesses that want to expand in town, and to bring new business and new sources of income to the town. And to do, to do that, it's important to continue to follow up and fund the initiatives that the OPDS have started. We need to focus the, on economic development and the leadership staff on outreach and continuous marketing of properties and the town. And we need to keep funding the TIF, which thank you very much for approving that earlier this month, and certainly our website as well, as I mentioned. Promoting the town online and via social media are key initiatives now that need to be continued into the future, and the funding is necessary to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Claire Rogers, followed by Fred Kent.
My name is Clara Rogers. I live at one thirty-eight Pear Lane in Mystic. Thank you for holding this public hearing on all that's before us, and I'm here to speak about the, the school budget. And as the saying goes, "Well, you can't get there from here," which can mean that you can't get far in society without a proper and good education. We hear it from intelligent adults from all walks of life, and in countless movies where an adult is telling a young person that if he or she wants to go far in life or make something of him or herself, then they need to go to school and get an education. How many times have we heard that phrase? We need to continue investing our resources in our schools. Our elementary, middle, and high schools are the foundation of producing successful, learned, future participating adult members of society. I'm excited about the changes that are taking place at West Side and Cutler Middle Schools, offering our kids chances to focus on their natural talents and offering them future choices such as the International Baccalaureate Program. The continued efforts to hire the best administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, and caring staff is crucial for our students' overall well-being and is the backbone of quality, creative, and meaningful education. Please pass the Board of Ed's two thousand eighteen-nineteen-proposed budget. By continuing to strengthen our town with excellent educational opportunities, you will ensure a strong and excellent community of people. We, parents, thank the Board of Education and the Town Council for your diligent efforts to see this through. Thank you.
Fred Kent, followed by Dan Gajewski.
Hello, my name is Fred Kent. I live at one twenty Warren Avenue, and as the school board and the Town Council address the Board of Education budget, I think we ought to get a little perspective as to, you know, where the budgets have gone in the past years. In FY two thousand eleven, the schools had an enrollment of fifty-one hundred and nine students. That dropped by seven hundred and fifty-one students FY eighteen, down to forty-three fifty-eight. The staff in FY two thousand eleven was six hundred and sixty-point-eight FTEs. It's now up to eight hundred and twenty-one point three-five. So we've dropped seven hundred and fifty-one students. Our staff is up by a hundred and sixty. Two thousand eleven to sixteen, five years, enrollment dropped six twenty-four. Staff increased by a hundred dot five-five FTEs. In just two years, two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, enrollment's down another hundred and twenty-seven. Staff is up by sixty. So seven years in summary, down seven hundred and fifty-one students, up by a hundred and sixty staff. Why is it we close school buildings and enrollment drops and staff goes up? Do measured results track with staff increases? Keep these in mind when we're going over the budgets. The variables in a school, I think, are facilities, staff, student, curriculum, and management. I think there's time for a serious examination of the management of our school. Thank you.
Dan Gajewski, followed by Mitchell Shapiro-Albert.
Good evening. My name is Dan Gajewski. I live at one thirty-six Ocean View Avenue, Mystic, Connecticut. Good evening. Tonight, I am here in support for the Council to fully fund the Board of Education's proposed budget. I'm currently a junior at Fitch High School and feel grateful for the many opportunities the Board has provided funding for, and would be very disappointed if some opportunities would be taken away because of a lack of funding. As a student in the Groton Public Schools, I am provided with the opportunity to participate in many extracurricular activities, given the ability to take a wide range of classes, including college prep, advanced placement, and international baccalaureate. And I'm proud to say that in my twelve years in the school system, I have been given the opportunity to work with some of the best teachers the world has to offer. I am proud to say I have participated or have known somebody who has participated in each activity offered and in each level of classes. Fitch is currently one of few schools in the state to provide the International Baccalaureate Program, which the district have just started to spread the program to the middle school through the IB Middle Years Program. The education that Groton has provided has produced a wide range of students. Some attended or have attended college, members of the United States Military, and members of the workforce. Let's keep the diversity of graduate Groton produced. In the last year, Fitch has recently produced students that currently attend Princeton University, University of Pennsylvania, Dartmouth College, the U.S. Naval Academy, the U.S. Coast Guard Academy, and many more colleges and universities of distinction. The upcoming graduating class currently have two students accepted and ready to attend Yale University and Harvard University. Groton Public Schools provides such a great education that many Navy families decide to stay here after they retire from the service because of our great school system. Cutting the school budget will require cuts to many programs that many families stay for during and after their service, and a district that does not provide a high-level education and many opportunities might cause future families to leave and retire outside of Groton. Groton is unique as it is the only active-duty military base in the state of Connecticut, and to keep many veterans and military families should be a priority for Groton. These families are a huge part of our town. Groton should continue to offer them a great education, a education that is currently expanding with inter-district magnet, magnet school programs and expanding international baccalaureate program. So I ask that you fully fund the Board's proposal so Groton Public Schools can continue to move forward. And not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitchell Shapiro-Albert, followed by Andrea Frickman.
Good evening. My name is Mitchell Shapiro-Albert. I live at thirty-one Sequin Drive, about a mile from Fitch High School, where I'm currently a senior. I'd like to begin tonight by sharing a story. A little less than four years ago, I was about to make one of the biggest changes in my life, which was moving to Groton. Now, I was only moving across Connecticut, which isn't that far to most people, but to me it was an enormous change. I was a native of the state, and I was in the process of starting high school, so this was a very big deal to me. In fact, it was such a big deal that I didn't even realize the gravity of the situation until I look back on it now. I lived in a rural town, and I graduated eighth grade with eighteen other students. My school fed into a regional high school, which did and continues to do the best it can with what it receives. Now, I'm not sure if any amount of funding could ever be called enough, but this school came nowhere close, and it suffered from the expected systemic issues resulting from this underfunding. They don't have the resources to offer a wide range of extracurricular activities or alternative but equally rigorous academic opportunities. They can't cater to every student's needs, and they lose students in any number of ways, from disinterest to waning ambition, even to fatal drug usage. Of course, I didn't realize that my family was moving for me so that I could go to a better-equipped schools, and it's only by looking back that I realized what a tremendous difference that made in my life. For the first time, I was placed in accelerated courses with other students who felt the same drive to learn that I did. I was able to take part in a theater program year-round, and my opportunities only grew as I progressed. I joined the cross-country team, and then the indoor track team, and finally the outdoor track team, and I was able to hone leadership skills by becoming a captain. I was able to finally admit that I liked to sing, and I was welcomed into, into a community that could appreciate that, even though no one had ever taught me how to read a single note. I was able to audition for one of the three choirs that Fitch High School currently has and find a real passion in music-making. Most importantly, I found the IB Diploma Program, an international curriculum that I had never even heard of before I started Fitch, but has showed me what a collegiate-level learning community could look like, as well as forcing me to master crucial life skills like time management and self-discipline. And what's astounding to me is that I, although I've outlined a few of the many wonderful opportunities Fitch has presented me, I haven't even scratched the surface of what Fitch can offer to everyone else. I know how everyone deems when our robotics team or our marching band wins another state competition. I know firsthand how excited the students at Falcon Academy, our peer tutoring group, get when they finally master a tricky calculus program.
One minute.
I know how impressive it looked on my friends' resumes when they scored a four or five on an AP test. And I thank my parents every day for making the sacrifice to set me on a path to a better, more secure future. And I hope that someday soon, all the students of Groton Public Schools can thank And I hope that someday soon, all the students of Groton Public Schools can thank each of you here tonight for doing the very same thing for them. Thank you very much.[605.29][605.29](APPLAUSE).
Andrea Frickman, followed by Roseanne Katusky.
My name is Andrea Frickman. I live at 61 Warren Avenue in Mystic, Connecticut. Obviously. I'm the parent of a third grader at SB Butler Elementary School and co-chair of the SB Butler PTO. I'm here to support the Board of Education's proposed fiscal year 19 budget. With this modest increase, the district will be able to continue the good work they have done in educating our children. I've witnessed the impact on Butler as a result of the budget cuts from last year. This includes an increase in class sizes and the closing of their computer lab due to the closing of the Pleasant Valley School. Also, the PTO has been asked to help support classroom libraries, which are critically important as the teachers rolled out the reading workshop highlighted this evening. Any further cuts would greatly affect the ability of the Groton Public Schools to provide the high-quality education that was the reason I moved to this town. Before moving to Groton, I was a grants administrator for an urban school district outside of Boston. I helped the finance director develop the annual budget, and I know how difficult even a 2% increase is, because it doesn't even begin to cover the cost of contract increases and health insurance changes. Our administrators, our teachers, and our paraprofessionals here in Groton work tirelessly to educate our children, and I ask the Town Council to please support them by supporting the Board of Education's budget as proposed. Thank you.[703.81][703.81](APPLAUSE).
Roseanne Katusky, followed by Jen Egan.
Roseanne Katusky, 24 Ann Avenue, RTM Representative, District 5. And now for the other side of the story. If this budget is passed as-is, it will mean that Groton taxes have increased 21.8% in the last four years. 5.3% for 2019, 8.7% for 2018, 3.7% for 2017, and 4.1% for 2016. This is out of control, not sustainable, and shows a complete disregard for the Groton taxpayers. With a median household income of approximately $62,000, the taxpayers cannot afford another tax increase. I do appreciate Town Manager Bert's efforts to reduce staff, and hope that these reductions are not added back to the budget by the Town Council or the RTM. As the budget moves through the Town Council and RTM, hopefully there will be more reductions. Please consider the Town Manager's comments from a recent article in the paper and reduce employee and post-employment retirement benefits. Enjoyed by the Town of Groton Board of Education employees. These benefits are unheard of by the taxpayers who are paying for them. Regarding the $3.9 million increase in capital improvement accounts, if these are the items that the Town Manager has determined to be the priorities of the town, then he and the Town Council must reduce $3.9 million from somewhere else. Every line item in the budget is not a priority. The Town Council should just say no to the Board of Education staggering $1,849,508 increase. Please reference the information I provided you last night regarding areas for cost efficiencies and reductions. Yearly declining enrollment, as well as the fact that the Groton taxpayers will soon see tax increases due to the $184,500 school project, the Town Council should support and approve the minimum budget requirement of $76,468,239 for the Board of Ed 2019 budget. The taxpayers cannot afford another increase to the Board of Ed budget-
One minute.
In all areas of the Town of Groton municipal spending, there must be a balance between what is preferred, what is realistic, and what the taxpayers can afford. Hopefully, the Town Council, along with the Town Manager, will actually make the tough decisions and hard choices regarding spending versus taxes that Town Councils have struggled with for decades. It is well past time to stop Groton's yearly budget increases and support the taxpayers and pass a budget for this year with a zero tax increase. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Roseanne Katusky.
Jen Egan, followed by Mike Whitney.[883.69][883.69](APPLAUSE).
Hi. My name is Jennifer Egan. I live at 52 Brookview Court. As a parent and resident in Groton, I'm here to support the proposed school budget to help continue with lower class sizes, enrichment programs, highly qualified teachers, and additional staff members to ensure the least restrictive environment for special-needs students, and an overall enhanced education experience for all students. Groton schools must continue to grow and be progressive in order to compete with the rest of Connecticut. Thank you.[925.54][925.54](APPLAUSE).
Mike Whitney, followed by Katie Jones.
Thank you. Mike Whitney, 112 Deerfield Ridge Drive. I'm RTM Representative, District 5. I'm the Chair of the Education Committee, and most importantly, a parent. I'm not sure if spring has arrived, but I know budget season is in full swing at this point. And I know we all have our work cut out for us, and I already deeply appreciate the work that's already been put in by the Town Manager, the Directors, the Groton City Council, and Mayor, Superintendent, and the Board of Ed. I've begun going through the budget, and I already have some questions and views that I'll share. First, both the Town Manager and the Board of Ed point to the 18% to 22% increase in employee benefits as a major factor for why the budget has increased. My questions are, was this anticipated last year, and what do we anticipate next year? Are we going to have to grapple with this year after year? The increasing benefit costs are partially countered by cuts elsewhere. Town operations are up by 2.58 million. That's an 8% increase. Subdivisions are up by 7%. And actually, to me, it looks like education has done the best job at controlling costs with a 1.85 million increase. That's only 2.4% of their budget. I do want to know more about the rationale for the big jump in the capital debt service at 2.84 million, a 54% increase. This budget tends to be a level-service budget, but I'm still unsure right now whether the education budget will truly maintain a level service. We must make sure our children receive the educational essentials. And by the way, the enrollment is anticipated to increase next year. I want to make sure that we're on a path that will elevate our performance and help us climb out of the Alliance District designation. I am honestly however concerned that the school budgets, their site budgets, seem to be cut by around 25% for next year. So it sure sounds like our hard-working teachers are going to have to do more with less. I'm thankful that our state educational cost-share funds have been restored. This is a vital safety net, helping us from falling farther. But we also need to push our state to allocate resources for the Alliance District planning so that we can strategically plan a way, a path forward, and a path to excellence. This is the ladder we need. We can do our part at the town level by supporting an educational budget that helps us climb. And I know from year to year that the education budget has often been a target for cuts, and it's probably a reason why we're in Alliance District now. I don't think meeting our minimum budget requirement is enough. I hope when we're focusing on our dollars as we look through the budget, that we don't lose sight of the main goals during the budget season. And for me and many others, the overarching goal for education is to improve our school system, and that's for the children's sake, but it's also for the continued vitality of our town. Thank you.
One minute. Thank you.[1121.01][1121.01](APPLAUSE). Katie Jones, followed by Cindy Phan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Jones, and I live at 12 Ronda Drive in Mystic, and I am a lifelong resident of the region, as is my husband. He grew up in Knowank, product of the Groton Public School systems, and proud to say so. We are blessed with two very wonderful children in the Groton Public School system, both of whom require that extra from the teachers who serve to teach them. My daughter has autism spectrum disorder, and she has other mental health diagnoses that, as you may imagine, pose significant challenges to her learning. But through ongoing advocacy, community support, and our wonderful open communication with the Groton Public School system, we have succeeded in developing an educational plan for her that allows her to thrive in her own school, among her own peers. Without the quality support she receives from Groton Public Schools, she would surely need an out-of-district placement at a huge cost, not only financial, to the town, but emotional to our family, to have our daughter separated from us. Quite simply, her success would not be possible without a well-funded public school system. I urge the Town Council respectfully to approve the proposed increases to the education budget, so that students like my daughter, so every Groton student, whether he or she has neurotypical, special needs, whatever the case may be, can continue to receive the well-rounded support that he or she deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.[1235.83][1235.83](APPLAUSE). Cindy Phan, followed by Judy Monroe.
My name is Cindy Phan, and I reside at 15 Denison Avenue in Groton, Connecticut. I wanted to come out tonight to speak upon the education budget being proposed for the 2018-2019 school year. While this budget will not directly be affecting me, because I will be graduating in a few months, I still had a very strong desire to come out. A little bit of a story. I entered the Groton Public School family approximately 15 years ago, and I have never left since. I started at Colonel Ledgerd, if anyone still remembers the school, Colonel Ledgerd Elementary School, and then went on to Pleasant Valley, before transferring to Kathy Kronaski, and then Westside for middle school, and now Fitch. I can truly testify that my time in the Groton District has allowed me to grow and flourish to where I am today. Even now, standing here before you speaking, definitely has taken a lot. So I encourage you during this time when you review the budget to please take into account all those that will affect especially the students. I've always said that education is the foundation for anything you choose to do in life, and when you have a strong foundation, you can build anything on top of it. So if we invest in our students now, we will not only benefit them in the present, but we will also benefit them in the future, and also the future of Groton. Thank you.
Thank you.[1329.83][1329.83](APPLAUSE). Judy Monroe, followed by Portia Bordelon.
Good evening. My name is Judy Monroe, and I live at 23 Ice House Lane in Mystic. And many of us choose to live in a village or small community in order to really get to know and enjoy that community. I'm here as a volunteer and a member of the Board of Trustees of the Mystic Knowank Library, and that library is a very integral part of our community. I so appreciate what the other speakers have said about their library, because we offer the very same kind of services to the community at large, and we enjoy the opportunity to be able to be of service to that community and to involve people in our programs, in our very robust children's program, the education of people on a variety of subjects, discussion groups, and book groups. And of course, we're housed in a beautiful historic location, along with our very own library cat. But as many of you know, an association library does not receive any services from the city. We have no HR support. We have no facility support. So basically, as an association library, we really depend on the kindness of others. For the past two years, the budget for the Mystic Knowank Library has been reduced each of the last two fiscal years. I'm here to ask you to look at that support that you're giving to that community, and I ask you to restore that support that we have received in the past, because we are community. Thank you.
Thank you.[1448.45][1448.45](APPLAUSE). Portia Bordelon, followed by Tim Pratt.
Portia Bordelon, 159 Shenacast Parkway. I'm also an RTM Representative for District 2. Thank you, Mayor and Council, Board of Ed, for being here today, and the community at large here. My questions stem from, once again, I'm in full support of education. I believe that, you know, like everyone has said tonight, I think the students spoke, nicely about how it's important to have a wonderful education, and I also was a product of that, growing up here in Groton. With that being said, from a different standpoint and looking at things, we sell the program here in Groton, from our IB program to this and all these other things, but a lot of things are still lacking, like we're in Alliance District for a reason. And I feel that there are some schools in our district that are still struggling. At the high school level, students who are identified as having a 504 and not an IEP currently are lacking services. The school counselor is the one at this time who is coordinating and facilitating the 504 for the students, and the teachers are having to manage it. I have proposed and passed out examples to the Board of Ed as ways in which we could improve that, after looking at other districts where they have support for 504. I know we're talking about budget, and so that's the most important thing. Unfortunately, when we approve the budget, we're voting on a number, but we do not have any control on how the Board of Ed chooses to move that money throughout all of these different areas in our district. I just encourage the Board of Ed to continue to fund and support children with special needs, IEPs, 504, districts with underperforming students that are capable of learning with the proper support if they are given the proper tools from this district. I feel in this district that sometimes I feel like we're misguided, you know, once again, we're funding all these different programs but lacking remedial support in our lower levels for our students to learn. When looking at this budget, I know that Dr. Gannier stated that there is more online, and if you do, I implore you to go online and look at this. The packet that I received, started on day one, when I received my budget, I started having questions. When looking at this budget, you'll see that there's line items and object codes, and under those line items, under those object codes, there's more things that are under there that are distinctively related to the topic there, some not so related. And when you look to the right, everything in parentheses is an increase. What I'm asking for is for-
One minute.
-FOI, Freedom of Information. I feel handing out a budget like this without the proper, you know, identification of what is under these object codes, as a citizen, as a parent, as a town representative, as a community, it's really hard to vote for or against a budget when you really can't adequately see where these funds are being distributed and where they're going to be going. So I encourage the Board of Ed to be more transparent so that I can adequately support the 2.4 increase, or decrease, or 1%. But with a budget like this handed out, it's really hard for a person to distinguish. With all respect, I have been in contact with the Board, and we've been emailing since the 16th of this month, and I've yet to receive an expanded budget that explains each of these item codes. I've heard in the past it was expanded. Where that changed and stopped, I'd like to know. Once again, I'm all for education. I wouldn't be here if I wasn't. I just encourage the Board of Ed to open up these object codes so we can fully see the work that you are truly doing. Thank you.
Thank you.[1659.37][1659.37](APPLAUSE). Tim Pratt, followed by Leah Kennedy.
My name's Tim Pratt, and I reside at 1288 River Road in Mystic. And I'm here to express support for the funding that's provided for the J. B. Smith House Museum. The J. B. Smith House is an historic farmhouse, colonial era farmhouse and museum that belongs to the Town of Groton, and it was left to the town. The town has an obligation to fund and preserve the house, but beyond that, the house is an asset to the town. It's open to the public. Currently, it's undergoing some repairs, and there's been a shortage of staff due to the budget problems that the town's been facing. But in the past, the house has hosted programs, events, educational events. We've had colonial reenactments on the site. So it is an educational asset to the town. It's part of the cultural life of the town. It's also a symbol of the history of the town. It is one of the earliest structures in town, and it's also a part of the, it's on the National Register of Historic Places because of its architectural significance. And so I just hope that the Council will support the funding that has been designated for the house, and so that the house can continue to enrich the cultural life of Groton. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1772.91][1772.91](APPLAUSE). Leah Kennedy, followed by Gretchen Chipporini.
Mayor, members of the Town Council, and Board of Education. My name is Leah Grenair-Kennedy, and I live at 152 Cedar Road in Mystic. Thank you very much for your service to our town and for your support of Groton Public Schools. I would like to thank Daniel- I would like to thank Daniel Gajewski, Cindy Phan and Mitchell Alpert Shapiro who spoke so eloquently tonight. I thought it was so inspiring to hear their stories because it's, when we really hear how we're setting them up for the foundation that's needed for their future, it makes us realize how important the work is that you come out to do and all the meetings that you suffer through as you go through budget season each year. So, thank you for illustrating that. Thank you. They talked about how the IB program has challenged them and transformed the way that they think and learn. So, I'd like to talk tonight about how I would ask that you fully fund the Board of Education budget. It is a below zero budget and the schools have sustained cuts each year. It is a fiscally responsible budget that reflects seven years of modest gains with only a mere three-quarters of a percent increase, supported by $5.2 million in grants. I wish we had some of those grants in Stonington Public Schools where I am an educator because we do not have all of those grants coming in. As a taxpayer and a mother of three in the district, I ask that you support the Board of Education budget to maintain class size, to maintain diverse programs including the International Baccalaureate Program, to enhance the literacy program through the Writers' Workshop and Readers' Workshop as well as the new math workshop. I also ask that you support the planning and implementation for the new next-generation science standards. We're rolling out those tests right now in Stonington Public Schools as well as all across the state and they're high-stakes tests and we need to have planning and lots of curriculum work done to make sure that we have students that are competitive coming out of our districts. Our fifth grade daughter, like all of the elementary school students in the district, has made incredible gains in writing and reading with Writers' and Readers' Workshop. I can't tell you the amount of excitement that I have seen over the past several years with both of these workshops through the grant that came in with Columbia University. The students of Groton have also made amazing strides in STEM, as was evidenced this Saturday, with 25 students from Groton Public Schools, it was kind of embarrassing, there were too many Groton Public School kids there, swarmed the Invention Convention and I looked online only to find out 15 of them made it to the state championship.
You have one minute.
And I thought, wow, that's pretty impressive. I wrote to them to ask if it was an error and they said, "We're very proud of Groton Public Schools." So, no, it was not an error. So, as a Stonington educator, parents regularly ask me how we could start an IB program at Stonington High School. And it is through programs like this that we see our students set apart. If you apply to a Canadian school with an IB diploma, you enter as a sophomore. Our junior is currently looking at Canadian schools for that reason because we want to make sure that we're going to be using our college funds in the best way possible. That is yet one more advantage that we are offering to Groton residents. It is also through the IB program that students are receiving acceptance letters at competitive universities like Harvard and Yale that we would love to be seeing at Stonington. It is through programs like that that we are setting apart our students. We also are being able to expand the program through yet another grant with the Middle Years Program. And I know that as a world language consultant and educator, you will see incredible gains if you see the Middle Years Program expanded. So, I ask you politely to support the full funding of the budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gretchen Chipperini followed by Fran Whitney.
Good evening, Gretchen Chipperini, 87 Phoenix Drive. And I think I should mention, I'm a product of the school system too. Dr. Ackerman was my school teacher a long time ago. Okay, my presentation's going to be quite different. We have suffered with negative growth in revenue in Groton for over 14 years. Under Mark Ofringer and almost all Republican councils, we've had chance after chance to diversify our economy away from the risk of depending upon two major employers. Up till now, we have completely failed. We are now in a predicament, a dire predicament, where we are expending our ability to earn because of this. Last July, the last council handed us an incredible 8.7% property tax increase that was supposed to cover us if the state did not give us the $5 million for the schools. And then we were handed the $5 million, you've all heard that tonight, plus another million from the state. So, where is this $5 million that we all paid in additional taxes? It silently went into the fund balance, or more commonly called the rainy day fund, that was stolen from year after year so that certain politicians running for higher office could conclaim that they did not increase the budget. It was entirely smoke and mirrors. While this was going on and our citizens did not know the truth about the terrible fiscal health of the state and our town, the citizens voted to approve a new school. I do not think the results of that vote would be the same if it was done now. The $5 million that we did not rightfully get back in lower taxes this go around was put into the fund balance so that we could get the bonding agents to rate us higher so that we could get more favorable lending rates for this school bond in that we truly cannot afford. And I think that just happened. If this is unconscionable, if this unconscionable budget passes 6.5% on top of the 8.7% increase of eight months ago, we will be looking at down the barrel of a 15.2% property tax increase in one year. And a promise of a 5% to 7% guaranteed yearly increase on top of the 15.2% for a minimum of 12 years in the future for the school. Now, no town can sustain this. Something has to give and the give is that people and businesses are getting out of Dodge as fast as they can, which means that those of us who are left have to pay increasingly more of the budget if it doesn't go down. This increasing spiral downward is what brought Detroit down is what is happening in Hartford right now. Does anyone think with these advertised increases that are the highest of any I've heard in the entire country, that we are going to get investors to come here? Do you not have to be a genius to answer that question? I've handed out to the council two graphs that I got from Mary, our tax assessor, and she, you can see, those are trend lines, the red lines. One goes up, one goes down. A successful town, those two lines should be parallel, not opposite of each other. Unfortunately, the public doesn't see this. If you would like to see it, you go see my show, Shake Up Groton, and it'll explain it fully.
You have one minute.
Okay, thank you. I am not against new schools, but people being able to eat, keep their homes and buy medicine is more important than a shiny new school right now. We need a budget that is going down as the revenue and all efforts are put into economic development to grow the revenue side. Please watch my show. It'll explain it. This is very complicated. And this new Town Council, please put the brakes on now before we become another Hartford. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Frances Whitney.
Hi, my name is Frances Whitney. I live at 112 Deer Village Drive in Mystic. I'm a parent in Groton and I'm an educator in another school system. First, thank you for your work. I know you put a lot of time and effort into the job that you're doing and the service that you're giving our town, so thank you. And thank you also for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to echo the praise that previous speakers have given to our public schools. I have kids in the public school system and we see that everyone's working really hard to support our kids. I'm asking you tonight to support the full budget. Our schools really do need the funding and I've heard previous speakers talk about how costs have gone up, costs of everything have gone up. And the only way to stay competitive with other districts is if we invest in our schools to the same extent at least that they are. We need to basically pull ourselves out of being an alliance district. It's great that we got the additional funding for it, but it's a deterrent for people who are moving to town to see that we are ranked lower than other districts, especially some of the other local districts. The only way to pull ourselves out of that alliance designation really is to invest in our schools and invest in our kids. So, I'm hoping you guys will keep that in consideration when you're voting on our town's budget and on the education budget. We'd like to think that, you know, 10 years from now, people will still be coming up here saying how wonderful our schools are and the only way to make that happen is to be willing to make that investment. So, thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. That is everyone that's signed up on the sign-up sheets. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak this evening? If you could come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
I'm Chris Regan, 20 Findley Way, Stonington, Connecticut. Family owns the Groton Shopping Plaza.
Findley Way in Stonington?
Findley Way, yeah. I know it's a thankless job to serve on the council. I mean, a lot of the stuff that you guys take on is a big task. And we've watched it from the sidelines for 66 years. Just think about that. We've been the top taxpayer for 10, top 10 for 66 years in this town and not once have we've ever fought the evaluation of the shopping center. So, we've been a partner to this town. But when we start seeing these budgets, the increases, you should be tying it to CPI because the trend is going down. What you see right now for education is not even going to be close to it in five to 10 years. We need to market this town properly and that's been our biggest downfall. We used to have it and to have 20% of the workforce from EB live in Groton, we're doing something wrong. And I think across the board, you've got to look at what's right for Groton, for the residents, not just the school system, because it's trending downward because you have the magnet schools. You have other schools that are pulling the kids away from the district. So, you have to really look at it. Everybody's competing for the students. And the bottom line is, if we keep the employers in this town and the workers to live in this town, you've got the school system, you'll have the budget. But right now, you can't keep taxing constantly going up. You can't. If I was to do that, we'd be out of business completely. We always have to watch our budget and we had to tighten our belts. And I appreciate you guys approving the TIF because I've been talking about it for three years and that is going to bring the grand list up. Watch it happen because it's going to happen. And I've been trying to get a train stop for Groton on Long Hill Road. So, I haven't given up that idea. Been talking for almost four years. I have another meeting with the Riddick. And I want to say one thing. John, I'm glad you decided to stay. I think you're going to be a great partner for Groton and we need to get everybody out to be positive. I just came from a meeting in Stonington, which has been negative in regards to development of how the employees of the building department are treating the contractors. That's bad publicity. We don't want that. And the, what would you say, the politics need to come out of it. You've got to do what's right for Groton, just like we've done for 66 years. We've paid our taxes, haven't said a word. This is, this is the first time I've come in and I'm going to be watching it. And if it doesn't go in the right direction and you're going to keep taxing us, then we'll look at the assessment of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, please come forward and state your name and address.
Hello, my name's Neil McGreen and I live at 20 Westwood in Groton City. And I am a mother of four and I have three kids in two schools here in Groton. Two of my kids go to CKMS and one of them goes to Clawchester, he's special niece. And without Groton, it would have been hard without all of the special things that we do get. I'm very fortunate that the kids do go to CKMS. I go there quite frequently. I'm actually the PTO president, so the kids see me every day a lot. And I see the teachers and I see what's happening and they're amazing, they're fantastic. And I, and I want this budget to support the schools, to support the kids because if we, if we don't, we're not going to make the best of our students. I'm a product of Fitch, off and on. I'm a military family. I'm married military. My husband's medically retired and we moved back home here because I knew what I, what my kids were going to get because what I got from Fitch. And it was off and on. So, and I know that they take into consideration all of the different students that are coming in, from families working at Pfizer to families working at EB to the military. It's, it's an abundance of different cultures, different groups, different ideas. And you see it at all of our public schools. You're going to see kids from everywhere and in every type of social status, economic status, it doesn't matter what it is. And the best part is, is Groton supports that. They understand that their diversity of it and if we can just keep the budget, don't cut it. If you can put maybe a little bit more, that'd be great, you know? We need volunteers. Every school will tell you, if you can't give us money, give us volunteers, you know? We're looking for a volunteer at the library. Just stack books. You don't even have to see kids if you don't want to, you know? So, just little things like that make a huge difference. It's a village that really raises a family and we're losing the village and we need to come back in. And if it's not the money, then come to the schools and volunteer your time. That's all I'm asking. And at the PTO meetings, all I ask is either your time, your money, or your food, if you've got food, you know, and creativity. I just want to see things happen for these kids. My daughter participated in the Invention Convention and she's going to UConn at the end of the month. She is beyond excited. And it was such a fun opportunity for the third and fifth graders at our school. And just to see that kind of stuff happen is really, really nice. And the teachers, they need the support from us as parents, as a Board of Education. So, whatever you can give them, even if it is your time helping them in their classrooms, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Trejo, 536 Shenacast Road. Evening to the Town Council, Board of Education, Town Manager John Burke, Superintendent Mike Ginear, Assistant Superintendent Susan Austin and Department Heads who are here. I'm actually thrilled with this public meeting tonight, hearing, more so from the public. I am a little disappointed, maybe in the format that has seemed to change to have a brief presentation by a town manager or superintendent. I got to know more tonight, and I know a lot about the town and Board of Education, from the public. I expect by paid employees of the town to give me more about what's going on in the education system, not the extracurricular activities, more about what's going on in the different departments and how where Groton stands across the state, not coming from the public but more so from there. I will ask the Town Council and everybody else when it comes to deliberating with the department heads and everything else to please be fair with everything. I mean, people know that I support education and I support the town, so I'm not going to say, "Give everybody the money." Please be fair with everybody. And I hope maybe our paid employees can give the public a little bit more about the town and the education system and how the education is working, not from 17 and 18-year-old kids who are wonderful students and the people involved in the system. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Board of Education. As others have said, thank you for your service. I know it takes a lot of time, it's a lot of hard work.
Could you state your name and address, please?
I'm Natalie Billing, 15 Ashby Street, Mystic. Sorry. I'm here tonight to offer you a couple of comments, general comments. One, and my information about the budget just comes from the article in the newspaper. I haven't seen the actual budget yet. But if what I read in the paper was correct, it looks like the total budget would result in a 5.3% tax increase. I hope that as you review the budget, you're able to bring that down a little bit. Something in the 2%, 3%, 4% range would seem more reasonable to me. I know that the town manager has already recommended reducing some positions and I want to give him a lot of credit for that. I know that's not an easy thing to do. And I regret that the increase in benefit costs, I think, is requiring us to make those kinds of reductions. That's an issue for another day. I think the superintendent and the Board of Ed have done a good job of keeping costs down and not having the large, large increases that we'd seen many years down and not having the large, large increases that we'd seen many years ago in the Board of Education budget, so I thank you for that. There's no question that I am an advocate of quality education. I think it's the most important service the town provides. Having said that, I still think it's the job of the council to now review the education budget and not to just say, "Well, we're going to approve all of it." You need to look at it, study it, and if you can find some things in it that you think can be reduced without damaging any child's experience in the classroom, their actual learning experience, then by all means, I think that's a conversation you should have with the Board of Education. I happen to believe that there are some reductions that you can probably find in the Board of Education budget. But my other comment, again, is a general one, and it's about your process as you review the budget, having sat where you're sitting and having sat on the Board of Education and the RTM. Typically, the council begins to review the budget department by department. The first day you sit down for your budget sessions, you're dealing with department by department. For years, I've never understood why the council does it that way.
You have one minute.
In my experience and observation, it would work better if you spend an hour or two as a council having a general discussion at your meeting about what's your goal? What do all of you think? What are you trying to get to at the end of the day? If you feel some reductions are in order, what are your priorities? Can you agree on them? If you can't agree on your priorities, and I have to say, I haven't seen a town council be able to in 20 years, but if you can't agree on priorities, can you agree that across the board reductions of 1%, 2%, some modest reductions might be necessary? Again, unfortunate, and I wish that benefit costs weren't driving that. If you do this, if you have that general discussion before you start dealing with department by department, I think you may find the budget process less frustrating, and I think that the result will be a better result for everyone. Thank you for your time, and when I have a chance to actually look at the budget, I'll send you some other specific suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call. Well, thank you all for coming out and for sharing your thoughts with us. We appreciate that, and we will consider them in our deliberations. I adjourn the meeting.